Okay. If I could have your attention, we will now call the Estacada City Council Traffic and Public Safety Committee Joint Workshop Meeting. We want to thank all of you for coming tonight. I was fortunate enough to sit through the first half of traffic safety and there were quite some interesting questions put out about traffic safety in the city of Estacada. Now, we've made this a priority. That's why we're having this workshop right now. We've been talking about it for a long time, but it was time to make some critical decisions in our traffic in this city. We are growing fast, faster than we had anticipated. And safety is the number one concern and traffic safety is doing such a great job. After hearing their meeting tonight and hearing the people that came out to speak for it, I am excited to see the direction it's going in. And I think this workshop will help bring it to to a finish and get everything done that we need to get done. So I want to thank all the councils for coming tonight, the chief at the end, our city manager. They've done a great job putting this together. So that said, we will go to the first citizen and committee reports are a little for the first questions. I have a couple here. The first one I have is Maggie Kelly.
Hi, everyone. Thanks for having me. My name is Maggie Kelly. I'm the Director of Communications for the Estacada School District. And I wanted first and foremost, just to say thank you for the traffic committee, for all the work they've done. They paid us a visit at the district office just to gather our input as a district, and I know that was really great. And then we really appreciate the speed bumps on Pierce. That has been such a speedy area. So we appreciate all the work you're doing just to amplify messaging around safety, really around our schools. It really impacts our students. As we go towards the implementation of our new reconfiguration plan for our schools, we anticipate that we will have even more student walkers than we currently have. So as we are thinking a year ahead to that, a couple of things that we would love to see happen as you consider traffic safety is potentially a four-way stop at Sixth and Broadway. That's where people exit River Mill and for one thing, the traffic really backs up there and then people speed out of there when they get their chance. And we have a lot of student walkers that are crossing there. So potentially a four-way stop is something that we would love to see as a district. And then additionally, if there's any way to get more lighting around Estacada Middle School, we have noticed it is getting dark in the mornings lately and just we have so many student pedestrians and our crossing guards do a really great job in that area, but as much lighting as possible, just to amplify it for our drivers would be greatly appreciated and I'm available if you have any other questions about the district's perspective, but thank you again for all the work you're doing to keep our our students safe as they walk to and from school. We appreciate it.
Great. Thank you.
So can I ask a question? Don't it doesn't PGE if if we if we need a street light, won't they just put it up? We need streetlights in certain areas.
Yes, we can request additional streetlights if there's already a pole there. I kind of thought all those poles had lights on them, but I agree, it's a very dark area, even with the lights that are there. So we'll have to look into that and see what we can do. We might need pedestrian level lighting, but that would be a long term. So to do something quickly, we'll we'll look into it.
There have been times that we have rented lighting just to shine shine a spotlight on that area. But yeah, something more permanent would be appreciated if possible.
Back, you know, back when we did our Ford Foundation Leadership Program, we had talked about pedestrian level lighting and then we ended up putting ground lighting, you know, lights in the ground, walking up to the auditorium. So yeah, I mean, that that was a great idea back then. That's the idea that I wanted to go with. So yeah, I mean, pedestrian level lighting, if we could try to figure that out.
Quick question, are you talking on Main Street or on Sixth or basically that whole area?
Kind of the whole area, but kind of by plan, a cup of joe in that stretch by the middle school. It's pretty dark and even even wrapping around the side of the auditorium as well.
Okay, thank you.
Okay, thank you.
Yeah, didn't we? Did you guys do a light audit? Is that correct?
Well, we did. We went from cemetery all the way to Pierce down to Second around Clackamas River. And PG&E came down around and updated all of those. So obviously that still not bright enough. They do went up Main Street and then they went over up to River Mill and did all those. I mean, I have all the like 80 emails to prove it.
It's definitely gotten better for sure. We're still getting parent comments, staff comments, student comments. So even more as possible, but we have we have noticed an improvement over the years. So.
I like Jerry's idea with pedestrian level. I think we go above and beyond around the school. It's dark. They have lots of plays and stuff like that. I I know that with the sports going on, we're coming into basketball season and things like that where people are going to be doing shared gym space and things like that, which we're already struggling with. Even places for our kids to recreate and limited access. I know my kids personally are on the cheer thing. I go to pick my daughter up at night, that parking lot that runs where the buses come through is dark to the point I'd be concerned about my daughter sitting out there for 10 minutes if I was running behind or something. I think there's a definitely things we could do to improve that. I'd like to maybe look at taking every sign down that entire stretch and putting those little blinky lights into that as well. I think that there's some stuff we could do to shore that up so that it draws attention to the fact that that entire street is a school zone.
I like that. Anybody else?
Thank you.
All right. Next I have Tracy. What is it? Hayes or Hayes? There you are. Yeah, I should have known it was you.
Hi, I'm Tracy Hayes. I'm from Campanella. I think I've talked to most of you, met all of you. Here today again, and I know some were here for the traffic and safety and heard a couple of things that we've been talking about in the neighborhood.
It's a little closer to the mic.
Yeah. And I know that we've talked about at the council meeting at the park was a stop sign at as you're coming down the new extension. So putting a stop sign right there with it being a blind corner. Lots of almost, you know, accidents happened. I see people posting Campanella like this miss, you know, accident. Someone's turning out on Forest Park. You know, there's a stop sign there, but there's not one coming downhill. It's a blind corner. So proposing that, and I know that we kind of talked about that was possibly in the works. Is that correct?
Yeah, we've talked about it. I think it is in the, well, where are we at on that, Melanie? I mean, we talked about it, but I don't know what the end result was.
At this point, we're monitoring that intersection right there because it's kind of odd where Forest Park and Liberty and Hillway, they all kind of come in. It's a the way that it's designed is a little unusual, but that new speed hump just went in just prior to the to the what they're coming from cemetery into the Campanella neighborhood. There's that new speed hump there. So we want to see how that if that helps to slow people down. And then I think the next step would be to put, we also need to do the crosswalk light. So if somebody wants to cross the street there, then it would they'd push the button and it would flash both sides. So cars coming around that corner would know that A, they're going to hit the speed hump. So they're probably slowing down anyway, but then they know there's a pedestrian. And then I think the last resort would be to put a stop, do stop signs there because of the way things are aligned, but that's not off the, I mean, I'm not going to say it's it's like we haven't written that off, but we're trying to work our way through to make sure which way is going to be the best best way to handle that little area.
So in talks still.
Yep.
Okay, perfect.
So being someone that that drives that that blind corner is, you know, the times that I drive it, it's, you know, right now, this time of year, it's dark. So if there's somebody there, there's there's lights, you know, headlights. But you know, before the, you know, before the time or the lighting change, it is a pretty, it is a pretty scary, not scary, but dangerous, you know, it's intimidating. So I stopped there. You know, I stop at the, I stop at that crosswalk just because I've had, I have had people pull out in front of me, you know, coming to pulling onto hill. You know, with, you know, in daylight hours. So it is pretty intimidating pulling up to that, you know, going up to that that intersection and not you know, not stopping.
Yeah, no, it definitely is. And like I said, it's really any time of the day.
Yeah.
People can't see and you just go, cool. I'm just going to chance it. I'm going to go. I stopped. I'm gonna, now I'm going.
Please talk into the microphone.
And you don't know what you're getting into. So do I have a second for a couple of?
Yeah, go ahead.
Okay. So you were talking, Melanie, about the crosswalk and adding the flashing signs. Is that moving that crosswalk from where it currently is where it's the white lines are and moving it to the next orange curb?
That has not been considered. Wherever it goes across, it needs to have a an ADA ramp for the to get onto the sidewalk. And I don't remember, I don't, if that's a possibility, we'll look into that. But I don't know if we'd have to like rebuild the sidewalk. We'll have to see how how the logistically how that would work. But at this point, the next step would be to put the crossing, the flashing crossing lights for pedestrians.
Okay, because I know the that the further one where it's not marked in the street, there is two yellow. It's ADA. So it's already there in place. We would just put the lights there, move it to where when you're when you're coming downhill way, it's for the new extension, it's further away. So the traffic will see the pedestrian rather than just sneaking up on them.
We will look into that for sure.
Okay, that'd be awesome.
Thank you for that suggestion.
And then I talked about a mobile radar and kind of talked to the chief about that a little bit. If that was an option in town, just because of all the excessive speeding we have, obviously in Campanella, we have a ton. I see it all over the city. So looking at the cost of what it would be to purchase one that actually you could generate a revenue off of and what that would look like for that machine, like how long would it take the city to pay that machine off with the revenue it's generating? You know, we're talking about, should we change speed limits and go from 25 to 20? But really that doesn't make a difference when nobody's abiding by it in the first place. So how do we actually get someone's attention? And I really think looking into what that would cost and the revenue that we could generate to pay for itself to keep it in the city for just us and not share with other cities would be awesome.
Yeah, I like looking into that idea. I think that would be an asset to the city of Estacada. It probably is pretty expensive. I imagine it's something we're going to have to look at, but we will definitely study that and see if that's something we could possibly do. Because I think it's a great idea. I do. The more the merrier, right? The more we have out there, the more they're going to slow down. So and that's really what this focus of this whole group is right now is to get them to slow down.
Yeah, how can we slow it down? And I know like the chief, I think it was you that had mentioned that we had one that had some broken pieces or whatever that was being repaired, but it didn't have the capability of taking pictures and doing that photo radar. So it was basically just, you know, hey, watch your speed kind of thing, which we know that doesn't really, it hasn't proven to be very effective in the city. So if you actually are getting a ticket, like hello, wake up, maybe you'll think twice before speeding. So I would really love to to look into that at least.
I think that's appropriate. We will definitely do that.
Okay, great.
Thank you.
Thank you.
All right, we have Melissa Damascus. Come in. Oh, sorry. You gotta give me credit here, you know, getting old.
You too. Okay, so I I feel like I'm repeating myself from the last meeting, so it's okay. I was just going to discuss, I live in Campanella State and the same as Tracy, Hill Forest Park needs some kind of stop or something more than what it has right now. Hill and Eagle Creek are people speed through there all the time. And going off of what I've heard lately, I agree with the Sixth and Broadway should have a four-way stop. Definitely. I avoid that place like the plague. Like I go all the way around Zobrist or I do the all the way through so that I don't have to sit there for 10 minutes to wait to make a left to go back home.
Yeah.
But that was pretty much it.
I appreciate you. Thank you. Bringing all those back.
Thanks.
Okay, I'm now with the last name on that one. I can't read it.
Michelle Martholler.
There you go.
Hello, my name is Michelle Martholler and I want to talk about Sixth and Broadway. I live on Broadway, so it's really a hot mess. And I really believe it needs a four-way stop. And we need to have lights for those kids to cross that street. Myself, my kids, many kids I've tried to help cross there. It's not safe and I really would like to see us do some stuff. And I also would like to talk about speed humps on that road. I know they don't seem it's long, but people don't stop, first of all, at River Mill, coming through there either direction. Obviously, it's optional is what I get. But they're drag racing down our street and they're not stopping on Sixth either. So we really need to try to look at some different things to do to keep the school zone safe. I mean, that, you know, and the darkness is another issue. My street's pretty good, but once you get to the end, it's just dark and those kids are walking from games in the dark. And so I think we can do better to change that.
And I think I'm in agreement with you as far as Sixth and definitely on the school zones. I don't think there's any option off the table when it comes to the school zones. We'll make them as safe as we possibly can. And that's been a priority, I think, of this group is to make sure that we get those up to date and that the kids are safe. So we're definitely looking into that. So anybody else? No? Okay, thank you.
Thank you.
All right, council and committee discussions on traffic and public safety. We're at that point. We've got you all in the room. We heard a lot of what you had out there tonight, which is the big focus. Where where do we go from here? Well, we're all here tonight to find out what the priorities need to be going forward. What do we want to look at first and how do we want to approach this?
Let's do the speed study first.
Yeah, yeah.
The police chief's report.
Yeah.
Chief, I'd like to, I understand it's 461 traffic stops since January. I don't know if you can answer this, but I want to know how many of those ended with a citation.
Can you grab it?
I can't tell you right now. I didn't pull that up, but it is something I can't get for you.
Okay, so I think that, you know, to to accomplish what we're trying to accomplish, you know, we're going to have to I understand that, you know, talk to people, inform them, you know, warnings and everything, but if if that's going around and that's what they think they're going to get, it's not, it's not going to impede them from speeding. They're going to, they're going to do it. So I think we're going to have to step up and, you know, I don't know how many, how many of these ended in citations, but I think that that's something we're going to have to, you know, really push to, you know, to have the deputies do is just, you know, stop being, stop giving warnings and, you know, start giving citations.
Understood.
What do you guys think about that? I mean, everybody here.
Didn't we talk about, I think Clackamas County Sheriff's has a traffic enforcement team or a group of specialists? And I think we've talked about that. You know, it's it's well past time, it seems like to bring them in and, you know, they're because they're specialists and they're brought up for a special reason. You know, they're not letting people talk themselves out of whatever. And so I don't know what it takes to get them here. I don't know how many team members it would be if they could hit multiple or if they could station at multiple spots. I don't know what that looks like, but listening to the earlier committee meeting and just the ongoing comments that we've gotten from the from the citizens in the different neighborhoods, there's plenty of spots where they can just, it would be a lot quicker than the the radar thing is sitting a bunch of traffic cops sitting there and just having mail everybody.
So so I'll address the traffic team in the first place. Our traffic team is now down to two deputies due to staffing and budget. So it's not so much a team anymore. We end up with one working kind of what we call the outlying areas. That's, you know, you guys, Malala, Colton. And then there's one that works the central area and they swap back and forth. But yes, I have talked to them about getting them out here. You'd see the the pile of complaints that they get for traffic, traffic complaints, and I have asked them to make this a priority. So I will get them out here. I just can't tell you when and how how fast. I understand this is a priority and I'm I'm pushing that as well. But our traffic team has dwindled over the years to a two-person unit. So it does make it harder to deploy, right? Like when we had five motors, it was really easy to get, you know, two or three or four out here on any given day because there was a whole bunch of them that could kind of spread the workload.
I just like the idea of the, call it instant gratification, but getting pulled over by an officer and getting the ticket in hand. I think that's going to have a more significant impact than getting some through the mail that you might throw out or something like that.
Completely agree.
So I've seen one spot. You know, driving out of town, driving out of town in the morning, you know, five to six o'clock in the morning, driving out of town, the there's usually two deputies parked at the Barton Church. And that seems to the just the visibility of them being there, it seems to slow the traffic down, at least leaving. You know, it been depth from 50 down to 42 ish is what it is, is what it seems like it it slows down to in that area. So visibility is is huge. You know, and like I said, I just, I can't get I think Chief Mendoza said that the that the priority was to educate and, you know, there, which is basically just giving warnings. Well, it's just not, it's just not working, you know?
Understood. And education does come in multiple forms and one of them is a citation for sure.
This might just be ignorance on my end, but do we have any options, chief, that we could work with Oregon State Police to see if maybe they have some traffic units that they could send out here to assist with this? Do we have like partnership options that you guys could reach through your network to assist us maybe with motor or motorcycle cops or anything like that?
I don't know that Oregon State Police has any motors left. Again, they, over the years, they kind of got decimated to a staffing and they're building back up, especially in the Portland area. So we do have some good relationships with them. I can ask them if they have people out here working to obviously pay some special attention, but their their job and their dedication is to the highway. So you'll see them on Highway 224. You probably won't see them working throughout the city. They'll drive through the city, but that's not going to be their focus. But I'm absolutely willing to ask, especially because, I mean, the state highway is theirs, right? So that's their area responsibility.
Yeah, I just think coming off of 224 here, then there's down by Les Schwab's and there's some different places like that. I think that would increase presence. And then obviously I would say that it we could maybe look at, this would be a good conversation for us to start talking about this next FTE or this next officer that we need to address. Councilman Dola's been bringing it up that he would like to look at what it would look like to progress to that, to have another full-time officer. I mean, this is an incredible opportunity. While we're talking about you having limited resources, well, maybe we could help you by contributions on our end financially. I don't know what that looks like, but I think that maybe that's a discussion that we should take seriously now. Looking at the speeding and the citation thing. What I would hate to see here in full transparency, playing the devil's advocate, is how this typically goes. We do the speed thing and then it's it's unfortunately the parents that happen to be the one day running late and stuff like that. It's not the everyday speeders that get pinched and jammed, not to say that those guys don't get caught as well, but typically this affects just the the random people. So I'd like to look at doing this in a way that is effective, but also doesn't put somebody out on their bad luck too. I mean, times are hard enough as it is. So I do have a mixed feelings about how we how we escalate this, right? But I definitely think it's a priority. And then from your experience, some of this stuff I look at like in front of the school district, right? Like it would cost us money, but we got heat treated vinyl. We got other stuff like that. You go into schools like Portland, if they can paint a road green with a bicycle on it, there's no reason we can't do broad strips of bright yellow or stuff like that that says school zone or X-ing and get the street itself even brighter like that to draw attention. From your experience, is that type of stuff effective and? I mean, what?
I don't have a ton of experience with that. I mean, yes, visual cues are always more, right? We're talking about the new lighted stop signs. Those things are amazing. Anything you can do to draw more attention to what people are doing wrong, whether it's to themselves or to other people, definitely helps address the problem. I won't say it fixes the problem. We all know it takes people making a concerted effort to actually fix the problem themselves. You can write somebody a ticket every single day of the week, and if they're going to keep speeding, they're going to keep speeding if they're okay paying the fine, right? So it's changing people's mindset and, you know, the campaign you guys are doing with the the signage around town with the the Drive Safe, you know, all the speed humps. Everything you guys are doing is actually what I would be suggesting. You guys are doing a great job of trying to address all these issues. And that's my job is to make sure that my guys and gals are addressing it from our end as well on the enforcement side of things.
Would any of that aid you guys in that, you think, though? I mean, not, I mean, it's not going to slow people down necessarily, but you would say from your experience, it would.
Anything you could do to draw attention, especially in school zones, is is huge. You know, because you have the average person. I'll be honest, right? One of my first days back in the city, I almost ran the stop sign right over here, right? I came up to it and it's been a while since I've driven through there and I got my front tires to the line and it was a really quick stop. I was like, holy moly, there's a stop sign here. I'll be the first to admit it, right? And I know it's been there a while, but it caught me off guard. So I do have a little bit of a soft heart for some of that stuff because you can get caught. But it does make a difference, right? All the signage, like you said, if you're painting the streets or whatever, whatever engineering and you guys come up with can absolutely make a difference.
Okay. Great, thank you. Is there any other questions?
I remember reading that big municipal, that real 1100-page thing about traffic, things that you could do and to Council Metcalf's point. It's just, I'm not naive, but thinking that people go speeding down, you know, Main Street in front of all the schools is just hard to believe. And so off Council Metcalf's idea, that entire strip from Maine, from like you get to top of the hill, either first or second, wherever you choose, all the way to Sixth and do striping the whole entire way. I don't know if that makes it too busy for stop signs, what you would do to make sure that people are seeing that part and crosswalks and stuff, maybe a different color. I don't know, but that entire strip. Make it a visual thing the whole entire way. So it looks like a tunnel almost or something like that.
Well, it definitely gives their attention. I don't know how possible that is. I'd have to look into the rules, but. No, I like that. That's something to look at. Jonathan, you have someone else?
No, I just, I mean, regardless of what we come up with, what I would like to see happen with this is to put timelines on this and make this actionable. This community has waited long enough for us to him and Hahn. I mean, there was things that were brought up in the last meeting saying that there's an eight-year gap and there's stuff that's not addressed. And even Councilman Tembush is saying that some of the lighting issues that he addressed at the beginning of his term in council was is still unresolved. So regardless of what we decide to do, I would like to put timelines and measurable goals on this. And I would like the community to have something from this council that says you can hold us accountable after said date. Like I'm I want finite answers. I'm done with the him and then Hahn. I love the suggestions that we're making. We have a professional in the room that says this stuff does help. So I think that regardless of what we do, we need to give direction tonight.
Oh, I think you're absolutely right. That was that was my next thing I was going to put out before we get some info from traffic and public safety, because I want them to have the room tonight too as well. So before we go on from this point, Jonathan made a very very valuable statement there about putting things on the ground. When are you going to stop talking about it and start doing it? And Melanie also brought up tonight that they need direction from us. So from the council, that's going to be in our next agenda, but I would like us to consider changing Sixth to a four-way stop. It needs to happen. That's a given. I don't care what studies have to be done.
Sixth and Broadway.
We, yeah, we've been dealing with this for a long time. I remember when Granny's was over there when C Block had that and the kids would go back and forth and the amount of traffic crossing that road unsafely and almost getting hit. It's happened numerous times. I've seen tractor trailers tipped over there trying to make that turn over by the school the school zone. I thought that would never happen and it did. So waiting for this is not an option now. I think we really need to consider the safety of our children. And the speed bumps over around River Mill, I think Melanie, me and you had a conversation about that last year. That's past the conversation point. That's that's, that's not our normal traffic issues. These are the kids we're talking about here. So having them safe is should be our main concern over everything else. Knowing that they're going to be safe in there and they that 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 corner coming around River Mill there is just hellacious. I've seen people speeding numerous times myself and I'm not even a cop. I'm just driving over there. So that I think that really needs to be a priority. Those two things we can do now.
Yeah, one thing we missed, I was just thinking about, and it was brought up, we we talked about this a little bit on our walk and it was suggestive that this was not something that was determined, but we'd addressed Liberty as well. That is the the offshoot of the Hillway intersection that we're talking about that other people cut to go towards the schools. We did, I would like to thank the city, that especially Dawn and them, they did great work and very quickly they installed that four-way stop there that as at Liberty and Hillway. We did, I would like to thank the city, that especially Dawn and them, they did great work and very quickly they installed that four-way stop there that as at Liberty and Hillway. Or excuse me, Liberty and Broadway, Broadway, excuse me. They, they put that four-way stop and I think that's been tremendous. The school district has opened up their, their fields and hold in gravel and allowed the softball teams and the sports teams to park inside their gates off the street, which is immensely helped that the flow of traffic through that area. So, you know, thank you to the school district for doing that. That, that's been huge, but there's still that offshoot that people know, okay, if I want to skip speed humps, I gotta, I can jam down this and there's kids that are traveling, riding their bikes to and from school down Liberty as well. So in the conversation of dealing with speed humps around, uh, Broadway and River Mill and stuff like that, I, we need to address Liberty at the same time. It just, it's be a foul swing.
It seems like, it seems like the, the, the way things have gone, we, we, we've installed speed humps on one road. It turns, uh, it turns the adjacent road into a raceway and we just address that, you know, on Pierce, because we put speed bumps on Schafford a few years ago. And then it turned Pierce into a race, race car, you know, raceway. So, yeah, I mean, that's, you know, we addressed, we addressed the Hillway issue. And then it just caught, started causing problems on the other road. So.
Any other things that we can put on the priority list right now? That's just why I want to focus on.
The lighting, the lighting in, um, in front of.
Extra lighting.
In front of the middle school. Yeah.
Okay. How we go about that, whether it's a partnership with P G E or whatever we need to do to get that lit up. So I think that gives us something to come back on the next agenda for us to look at.
Are there like eco-friendly solar floodlights that we can use that might be effective? That are not necessarily having to be hooked up straight to electricity, but will run year round on their own?
Oh, that's possible. They come out with a lot, a lot of new innovation. So.
What I noticed on Broadway, sorry, Maine, was that all those trees are right below those lights because Jim and traffic safety had them cranked up. So they are brighter now. They're just covered by trees.
Yeah, you can't see them.
So.
Yeah, it's a, it's been, that's been an issue for years and years. Um, I think it was twelve, twelve years ago that we did the Ford Leadership, um, thing. And like I said, that was one thing that we talked about was putting pedestrian level lights, um, you know, that are below the tree line. To light up that area. Cause you know, being a, a, a father of theater kids, um, we spent a lot of time in that auditorium. And, uh, you know, with a lot of, a lot of people, you know, having to leave, you know, travel on that road, it's, it, it's just dark. It's terrible. Um, especially when the trees are full.
Right. So I think, I think we've got some direction. Those are four pretty big ones that you're bringing back.
Yeah. Can I make a comment on Liberty? Um, because we did talk about Liberty and potentially putting some speed humps in there. And when we did a recent study there, it showed that the average daily traffic count was about a hundred, only a hundred and forty-five vehicles. And, thank you. Um, and the average speed, there was speeders, the average speeder was going twenty-seven point five and the average speed overall was nineteen. And so we could, um, go ahead and like make priorities for that street. But I also feel like some of these things that you guys are talking about tonight really overshadow that. And if we have to prioritize, when we're prioritizing the order of things, uh, I just thought I'd call those statistics out because I know I put in my report here, Fourth Street Hill, we just did a study on. That you, and the mayor has mentioned that multiple times, um, there, the eighty-fifth percentile on Fourth Street Hill is, um, thirty-four miles per hour. And so there is, and there was some, um, that the speeders are consistently in the thirties and low forties at least. Um, and so I don't know, um, exactly how to solve that issue on Fourth Street Hill that's so wide and straight and long, but, um, you know, maybe there's the, you know, those, um, things that go, I can't remember what they're called. They're like, they go down the middle of the line or the edge of the, the edge of the road and they stick up. And so it makes it feel a little more narrow that might, there might be other alternatives, you know, that we could look at, but I see, I know that's not in a school zone, but, um, we don't have the sidewalks in there yet. We're going to be working on that. Um, getting them from, so that there'll be sidewalks all the way down the hill, but probably we're going to need to put a crosswalk at some point on that hill. Um, and so I just kind of want to call out that there's, I feel like we've been getting a lot of things done in the council and the traffic and public safety have known them prioritizing this in the budget, prioritizing it with staff time. Um, but there are some, there's still more to do and, um, so I just kind of wanted to call that Sixth Street Hill coming in on Copeland. We did a traffic study there. Um, the eighty-fifth percentile speed was between thirty and thirty-three miles an hour going in and out, uh, um, coming up Copeland Pass Cemetery Road and at Schafford. Um, and so westbound would be, so coming into town at cemetery, the eighty-fifth percentile was thirty-one and at Schafford it was thirty. And then going out of town, it's thirty-three, um, at both of those spots. So still you're coming into town, you're coming into a school zone that should be twenty. Uh, so we do have some, we have a lot to pick from and we need to keep working through these. Um, so I just wanted to kind of throw those out to you in case anybody has ideas or, or, because definitely I've got the bringing back that consider sixth and Broadway for the stop, for the four-way stop, speed humps at River Mill. We're doing a, um, the thriving communities program and the, in conjunction with traffic and public safety and the school district, they're working on, um, taking a look at that whole area of River Mill School and how it can be made better. So my first, what I said in the previous meeting was let's wait till that gets done and then we'll, we'll know, you know, what's, what's the best thing to do in that area. But hearing it again and again, you know, maybe we do need to put some speed humps right there as a stopgap measure and then see either those will fit in the plan they come up with. Or, um, you know, we can, we can revise it based on how, how they're recommending. So anyway, just wanted to call that Fourth Street Hill, Copeland. Coming in on Eagle Creek Road. I know we've got some, the deputies have been sitting out there. I've been seeing them. Let me just slow down a little bit. I think having them visible is fantastic, um, because it really does. Even if, even if you're not really speeding, folks are not speeding. But maybe you're just, you're distracted. We do a lot of distracted driving and as soon as you see a law enforcement person on the side of the road, it's like butt off the gas and okay, what, what am I doing? Um, and so I think that is really helping and um, now I'm rambling, so I'll turn it back over to you and I can hand this microphone up to, um, Karina and Matt too.
Right. John, did you have something?
Yeah, I mean, there's, there's clearly a lot of things that, that need to be done. And so starting with, um, call it triage or waiting or something like that, start with where the pedestrians are. Um, the greatest number of pedestrian, uh, pedestrians and then work your, work your way out. You know, if you've got to start somewhere and you want to do stuff fast, um, it sounds like things go along sixth and you know, that whole area, start there and just go out.
Start with the school area.
Well, it's never easy. Putting those kinds of things together, I'd imagine there's going to be a lot of work to getting sixth. The way we're talking about it and talking about River Mill, putting in those speed bumps, that's going to take a little bit in itself, but the fact that we're doing it, that it's on the ground, that's what I want to happen. And I think that's, she's got the gist of that. I think the city understands that. Going forward, the priority being traffic, public safety. So I want to hand it over to them so they have time to add into this whole conversation. So Jim, I'm going to start off with you.
Okay.
And then you can move it around as you choose to.
All right. Thank you, Mr. Mayor. Uh, I just wanted to, uh, you know, put on to what Council Metcalf, Council Dolezal, these thirteen things, and I didn't get a, um, a copy of what we had for the, um, meeting right now, Melanie, with the, no of the, um, speeding and all that stuff. Oh, I do have it. Sorry. Uh, these, this should be a priority at every school in S T K A. No questions asked. We have things dating back to twenty seventeen and I'll read the one at six, six and Broadway, add a stop sign and flashing beacon at the S, the east leg of Northeast Sixth Avenue and North Broadway and a stop sign to the west leg. Upgrade crosswalk at Northeast Sixth Avenue and North Broadway with continental marking signs and ADA ramps. And if you guys have seen in this packet, ADA ramps, you can't cross there. They're ancient. It's, it's bad. No, but that's, that's my suggestion is those thirteen. Second one is when the chief was talking about the accidents, we had this meeting back in, uh, April two thousand twenty-three. The city council and traffic and public safety. First safety improvement, Sixth Avenue and Cemetery Turn Lane, two hundred thousand dollars low. Install eastbound left turn lane on northeast, northeast Sixth Avenue to mitigate the risk of rear-end collisions returning vehicles. While on July twentieth of this year, there was a head-on collision there. Person was, you know what, coming down Copeland. Person was turning left on Cemetery, head-on collision. Not a minor accident. Usually we see them out in Eagle Creek. We see them up Day Hill. We don't generally see anything. Now we have two and you know, three weeks over here at second and two twenty-four, we had one out here on Main Street on the way going to Bible study real early in the morning, because people don't have patience or caffeine, whatever you want to call it. This should be a priority. That's in the school zone. That's something that you all discussed in two thousand seven, and that was updated in two thousand twenty-three on the T S B. So that's what I have right now. I have a laundry list, but.
All right.
We have.
We'll pass it around.
Pass it around.
All of you to.
Carrie, go ahead.
I want to hear from everyone of you if I possibly can.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. Appreciate it.
Thank you. So particularly jump across, I said you.
Well, my, my biggest issue is the school zone. That is where I think tonight I am pleading and I am begging all of you that we need to get something done tonight at the school zone. Because when we went and did our walkabout, what, before the school year, it was in the summer, wasn't it? Or gosh, maybe even it was spring. I can't remember when we did it. Um, I mean, we're seeing kids because they're glued to their phones now. You know, and they're just like, do, 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 walking, you know, and, and traffic's zooming by and, you know, and the fact that yes, they should be slowing down in a trap, you know, in a school zone, but a lot of people do not, you know, I constantly go that route, you know, around the school. I had, my son was in, um, theater. So, you know, again, you know, I'm segueing, the lighting is an issue. So if we could work on that as well, but, um, four-way stop, definitely it's six and Broadway. I think, you know, despite what the report says, you know, recommends what, what was it? BKS Engineering, always stop, not recommended. They don't live here. So it is recommended, I think, you know, personally. Um, but yeah, if we could do something in the school zone, you know, I do like the idea of the, you know, paint, flashy lights, anything.
Sure.
You know, that's just my opinion.
It's a good opinion. Carrie, I'm going to jump over you.
Earlier this year, uh, Karina had mentioned, we, uh, put people in a wheelchair. For those that participated in that, you have to experience a wheelchair to know what it's like to be in one, especially one that isn't powered. So the attention around the school with elderly and youth and children and kids is imperative for safety. So we've kind of beat this horse up over and over since two thousand seventeen. And the idea that there's a cork in the bottle here, and now if we look at it and we say, well, gosh, the budget is important. We might not have the money to do it. Why? Why don't we have the money for safety? Just, just a question. When it, when it concerns our kids, elderly, we, we need to really look at this thing and just pull it right down to the wire and do it. Because it's been pushed off and pushed off and pushed off. Why? I don't know. But you can answer that tonight by moving this stuff through and just do it. There's always a reason. I've heard things like it's inconvenient on six to slow people down from Maine to Broadway. That's inconvenient? You call that inconvenient? That's a, that's a real inconvenience to drove from one, from Broadway, from Maine to Broadway and have to stop again, and you call it inconvenient? It's a school zone. Kids live in the screen. She just brought that up, meeting with, uh, the superintendent of the schools. Do it. His words were do it. Because he sat on it for, since two thousand seventeen. So we hand it to you to do it. That's the reality of this thing. Money's an issue. It's not an issue for other things. Just reality. Let's get this done. Let's get it done.
That's why we're here. Thank you.
Appreciate that.
I'm talking about, um, what you talked about the speed bumps by the school. That's cool, cool. But when we first started the speed bump thing, uh, we wanted speed bumps on tenth. Uh, from Broadway to Eagle Creek because we have the buses coming through there. We have people coming, I mean, parents, I sit there today and watch parents come to, um, come down tenth. They were going at least twenty-five or better. You know, because either they're late picking up their kids or they're late doing something else. And they don't care if there's kid, if there's animals out there. And luckily I've trained my dog not to go across the road, but there's other animals that are not trained. There's kids out there, especially the ones with the electric scooters. On the place I got, um, filed a complaint on, on this one kid that came to, because he rode an electric scooter right down the middle of the road. And that stopped. He isn't there anymore. But we need a speed bump there. And we also, now the parents are picking up their kids at the schools, they're parking on both sides of Tenth Street. And so that makes it even worse if somebody's speeding and buses trying to come through there because the buses go down that road. And then the, my next issue is a crosswalk. We put the splash pad in, we have a skate park there, we have library there, we have the senior citizens there. And they can't cross that road safely. I mean, um, the lady that owns the, the house there, the antique house goes out and helps seniors cross that road because they're catching the bus. So they're going to the thing. There needs to be a crosswalk between the park and the library by the, by the trailer thing. And I keep, they keep saying, well, they're going to do, you know, it needs to be done before, I mean, right now it's kind of, it's kind of, um, not so bad because it's, it's the fall and the winter. There's not a lot of kids on that skate park. There's not a lot of kids in that splash pad. But I've watched kid, the kids don't use the crosswalk. I mean, use the sidewalk. They ride their bikes on the supposedly the bike lanes that haven't been completely marked according to the way they're supposed to be. But they ride out in the road. So there needs to be a crosswalk between that park and that library before a kid gets killed or a senior citizen. Thank you.
Appreciate that. Thank you. Matt?
Oh, um, a couple, two or three quick things. Um, something that I thought had long passed, uh, the opportunity, but I was, when people were talking about funding, um, but back when the council was deciding on the, the way to reimburse, um, like a contractor had paid too much, I'll put it that way, uh, on the, uh, CDC's. I, I, I think it was at the meeting, the interim, uh, city attorney stated something about intergovernmental loans through some of that money, but I think, I think that was incorrect. That, that money can only be used for further CDC stuff, I think truly. Um, I, I was just, I've been thinking about that as far as funding, but, um, a, and then, uh, Council Dolezal brought up, um, the striping and things like that. I think that's generally referred to as a road diet. You can even see it going up, uh, two eleven to, uh, Sandy. Among those are like stub outs and so on. Or, uh, Shirley is mentioning a, a crosswalk, like at places, um, where there's not enough room, there's no left turn, say for instance, an island, a small island is put in the, uh, maybe it veers a car just off a little bit or something like that. Uh, and then last thing, I was kind of puzzled, uh, because I remember going on the wheelchair rides that the ADA that these last couple of years in Oregon, there was a lawsuit that a lot of that didn't get done. Uh, I don't know if it was too far out of the city zone or something like that, but and that's all I had my comments.
I appreciate that. Yeah, no, those are, those are good. As far as I know, we've got all the ADA accessible areas taken care of. When, uh, they came through and put those in, am I right, Melanie? All the ones that were designated to go in? And none of them were, I mean, they were all on the city limit, obviously. But they all got done. Uh, that I know of.
Perhaps I was just looking at them and thinking of uh, like I say, when we went on the ride.
Yeah.
It was horrible. Even I couldn't get up some of that.
Yeah, there was a couple of them. They had, at a different angle and we had to have them changed, but I think that got done too because we proved the point. Because they were not crossable by anybody in a wheelchair. So um, but I remember that did get done. So the rest of that is something to look at. I mean, with the um, STCs and the money we talked about with the lawyer, I remember that conversation.
Yeah, I wasn't sure, but uh, who was right.
That's good. Now council, I want to give you an opportunity to talk with traffic safety. Is there uh, some Jerry?
Yeah, I just, I really, I really appreciate Jim bringing up the um, the turn lane on uh, Sixth and at Cemetery. Um, that's a battle I've been fighting for, you know, seventeen, eighteen years um, living up there on, living of, off the cemetery. You know, there's, there's enough space, there's room for it. Um, you know, and I think it would, it would definitely make things a lot safer. Um, the visibility uh, turning on to, turning on to Cemetery when the, with the cars coming down, coming down uh, Copeland, the visibility is terrible. Um, unless it's this time of year where it's dark and everybody's got their headlights on. Um, but yeah, just making that, making that intersection safer. Um, I I'd hate to see another accident like that one. Um, was terrible. Uh, and I just, I, I would love to see us get something done there.
So the light poles, the existing ones, um, and then you're talking about pedestrian level. Um, I don't know what that means, but I don't need the, the definition. I mean, I get the idea, but and so I'm wondering if it's possible to, because on light poles, there's one light up on top. If you bring it down to pedestrian, could you have one going off at each compass direction or like put four different lights on one pole? Out like that or is it can only be one? And then um, and then just thinking of the neighbors, because I, I can't remember who I was talking to, but I had to take our dogs into the vet early in the morning. Because I'm normally not over there. Um, and made the, made turn from Sixth onto Shafford. And there's a light there that had been, you know, improved and there were two girls in the crosswalk that I barely saw. So um, you know, the need is, the need is, is dire. And it's, you know, you don't want to, it's not fair to the neighbors.
The idea is like sudden lamps. The idea is like these lights out here. Okay, the one, like the one directly right there, you know, that was, that was the idea that we, that we had all those years ago. Um, and then ended up not being able to do that. We did put lights in the ground.
Which so, but just, you know, or even like two or three or whatever it worked, but just increasing the number of fixtures per pole or something like that.
I can appreciate all of your comments, especially, you know, when you're coming to budget concerns and stuff like that and from an accountability standpoint, yeah, that's on us. I mean, whether we were here seventeen years ago or not, some of us didn't even live in this, that community at this time, but regardless, we're in this position and we owe you an answer. So I mean, from the optics of accountability, we can do better. That's what we can do. And that's why we're sitting here. That's why this emerged, this special meeting was called to address this and to take control of the driver's seat a little bit here and be more hands-on. Uh, that being said, I really appreciate the engineer studies and I think that they've served us well, but there is a point where the people in the room are the traffic study as well. And the people that live in the communities, not the people that live outside of it, not the people that interpret data and compare and contrast to other cities and then give us optics. I mean, we have a responsibility here to take that and meet that or match that with what is applicable to our community and what our communities asks are, if you will. Um, I, I have to say that I agree with some of the other councils sometimes on like the, the change in the speed down to twenty thing. I don't necessarily agree that that's the route. I think that Melanie and her staff have done a really good job of trying to produce alternative means to get away from that. Some of, to answer some of the community's questions. Look at the design of the street. Some of these streets are not designed to be twenty mile an hour streets. They're streets that are supposed to be through traffic, that are supposed to be faster flowing. Unfortunately, sometimes there's, we miss that too and maybe design. There's a lot going on. We've experienced this an incredible amount of growth, not to make excuses, but things have changed rapidly. To include people's behaviors and their cares and their courtesies towards one another. There's things in this that we cannot account for. But what we can account for is what we do from this moment forward. And to me, personally, I think the school is where we start. Our kids are the future. Period, the end. Our kids are the future. And if we have to prioritize anything, I think that that's where we start and we build out, kind of like Councilman Dolezal said, from there, we start at the heart of it, which is the kids. We expand, but I don't think it's unrealistic to say that we got ninety days for this and I want this done. I don't think it's unrealistic to say in six months, you could expect this. Now with that, there is process. Right? We need to be respectful that we have, there's a bid process and there's other things that we don't even see that they deal with on a staff level every day. God bless their heart for it too, because it's it's work that none of us want to do, right? And arguments. However, I do think that it's on us to figure out where we're missing in the budget. How to address this. And how to make our kids feel safe. And more, if it's an optics thing, then it's an optics thing. I don't think, I think that immediately the signs. That's an easy fix. I don't know what that cost is, Melanie, and I'm, I'm not asking necessarily for an answer right now, but I, I look at that, like some of these things like on the crosswalks and the, the buzzers that you hit to light them up and flash them. These are simple fixes that we could remedy quickly. Those are optics things, I think that would work as well. We've purchased a lot of that uh, heat-treated vinyl essentially, excuse me, for the thermoplastics, I believe is what it's called. Um, we purchased some of that already and we've been installing that, but could we do more? I believe so. Could we add new colors? Could we make it more vibrant? I, I mean, if Portland can do bike lanes, I don't understand why we can't do school zones. I think we can and we can give them that quickly. I would like to also note though, as we're being critical here. It's super important to also acknowledge the hard work that your staff has done. And that the Public Works Department, Don and his guys have been an incredible resource. Okay, they have worked very hard. They're very polite. They are out there. I, the other day I was going to the gym at five thirty in the morning and they were putting down new crosswalks with that thermoplastic redoing them. Five thirty in the morning, Don had guys out there. That also needs to be acknowledged in this room too. So our critiques here are not on just what's not being done or what hasn't been done. It's a thank you for what you're doing, but we're going to turn up the dial a little bit on our expectations. So I don't, I'm not the end-all be-all. I am one voice up here and my voice is for these kids and the future of this community in that sense. So I think I start with the schools, immediately the lighting. The turn lane thing sounds reasonable. I mean, that two hundred thousand dollars is a big budget adjustment. We could look at that. I'm sure there's ways we could partner or do, we got to find something. Go maybe grants that are more than just administrative stuff, but that are tangible in what they build. Right? What they produce outside of plans. And that's not a shot across the bow by no means, but this is maybe an adjustment that we can make on that end and finding sources of funding. We could, the economy's hard, but I would like to look at private funding options. What community leaders can we partner? What businesses in the area? Can we ask for help? It's our job to be creative and how we get this solved. So let's be creative. There's got to be other alternatives and I'm not putting that burden on any one person's back. These are just my thoughts. I'm thinking out loud as I go and I'd like to thank you guys for taking the time to be here tonight. A lot of you guys have been in this position for a long time and for you to be able to step up and say, hey, we need to fix this, Jerry, for you. Like the fact that you can be in here and say that, man, I got a lot of respect for that. You've been here a long time and you're saying, hey, we do need to fix it, right? So I mean, I'd like to encourage you to know that you have leadership that cares. You put us here to care. We are willing to make decisions, but it takes sometimes hard conversations. So that's what I got. I'm sorry.
No, it's good. It was good. Uh, Mike and then.
And I think it's a good idea to have priority on the school zones, focus on that first, but I still haven't heard a game plan for what we're going to do to prioritize things. John had mentioned like triaging things. What is an acceptable eighty-fifth percentile speed when we do a speed study that's going to trigger us to do something for a traffic control device on that? What, what's an acceptable number for the eighty-fifth percentile? Is it the speed limit? Is it under the five miles under the speed limit? Because some of the traffic studies, and I don't like the idea of that because someone feels like somebody's speeding down their street, that they're a priority over a street that's got someone that's going ten miles over the speed limit on a regular basis, that because somebody feels like somebody's speeding and the traffic study doesn't support it, that we should spend taxpayers' money focused on what their feelings are based on that is in contrast to speed studies where we have people that are actually speeding. I think that we should have a system in place that we're going to, some sort of scoring rubric where we use the number of trips on that street. The speed, this, the speed limit, how much the, the average speeder is, whatever the, whatever we're going to use to evaluate when we want to put new traffic control devices in, other than just chasing a speed hump here, a speed hump there, because we will end up with just a city full of speed humps. If, if you're saying that when we put speed humps on one street, it moves the street over, at some point we have speed humps everywhere and people are just speeding over speed humps. But like, we got to come up with a process, like there's no structure to what we're doing. What I've seen so far is like how we're prioritizing the list. So I, my idea would be that we decide equally on what, how we're going to score something. What, what's an acceptable eighty-fifth percentile when we get a speed study back? So that when we get complaints on a street and it comes back and it's the average speed is four miles under the speed limit. The average speeder is one mile over the speed limit. Is, do we, are we still going to move forward with putting a speed hump there to make people feel better? Or are we going to deal with where the issue is and focus on putting that speed hump someplace where they're speeding ten miles over the speed limit? Because I don't, I'm all for making people happy, but I also want to be responsible with the money of the, of the rest of the city that's contributing the tax base to actually solve issues instead of somebody's feelings. And I, it doesn't feel like the system that we have right now is doing that fairly for the whole city. And so I, I think that we break it up into the different types of traffic control devices. If we want to do a list of proposed speed hump locations, proposed stop sign locations, propose lighted alert signs for speed signs. When we have those lists, then we, we apply our scoring rubric to the, the trouble areas that are identified. And then get a punch list, one like, this is the first one we're going to do for stop signs. We're going to have a list one through fifteen. This is where we're going to prioritize putting our money for stop signs. We budget money for spot, stop signs and they do them in the order that we've lined them out. It's very efficient. Then we move on to if they're doing speed humps and we have budget money for speed humps. Here's the next ten, ten speed humps we're going to do based on the information we got from traffic studies. I, I don't, I don't like being dismissive of the, I understand that they don't live in our community. We don't have to take their recommendations. But the data is the data. It, I mean, we don't have to agree that we don't need to, I agree that we need a stop sign at six and Broadway. But the speed data is the speed data and we have to have some sort of baseline to evaluate information off of. And I think that we could just come up with a better system. I, I think the areas where there's the highest amount of traffic counts and the biggest difference between the posted speed limit and the average speed, some, something along those lines to prioritize those projects. And then we just very, have a very organized system where all of our traffic, traffic control device or, or traffic calming measures that we want to do are in different categories and we prioritize, prioritize them one through twenty or however, I don't know how long the list is going to be. And then we just start chunking through them. We can put more budget money towards those items and then we have a list for the public works to work off of. And we're not kind of chasing our tail as things come up here and there. If a new pro, if a new problem comes up, then it needs to be put on that list somewhere and, and reprioritized. So at least the city has a very clean system, the, the the staff has something clean to work off, so they know where our priorities are at. And I think that would be a, a good way to address it. But I, I think there's a longer conversation that needs to be had about when we get this speed study back, that we're treating each speed study the same, like what is an acceptable amount? And I, I just, it's been different every time it's come up before. And I think we should establish that, what a baseline, what, what are the, our tolerances, what are we going to accept and what are we not going to accept? And just kind of have that defined so that when we're looking at problems that come up, we have a lens to look at it through and we look at every one of those problems through the same lens is, is my thoughts on it.
I think traffic and public safety has done a pretty decent job on hitting the keynotes on the priorities in town. Um, as far as speeding goes, there's certain I think we've beat that horse to death, but uh, I, I, I agree with you. The problem is, is all these studies and studies and studies and studies, we could study till our kids are taking over the council dais. And at what point do we start doing stuff? And I think we should start with the work that traffic and safety has put in. Do the lights, take care of sixth, put in the stop signs and then just branch out from the school. Cause it's not a matter of if, it's a matter of when a child's going to get hit, it's going to happen at this, at this rate. So.
And I agree. I'm just saying, how, when we branch out from the school, how are we going to prioritize the projects outside of that? And just getting the system in place for doing it. I agree with you.
Jim, you got something? I, I just want to respond to uh, Councilman McElroy. I mean, like Council of Love and said, we have all of these. We have uptown, downtown. We have the school traffic zones. I just wanted to bring your attention to southeast Fourth Avenue. Okay, we have a speed study there. Well, right off of that, we have another hill coming down Mr. Highland's property, which people have asked for speed humps. And we're still, you know, no heartbeat at all. Nothing from the city. I haven't heard for a month and a half. It's been dead silent. Here, people are going thirty-four miles an hour, eighty-four, eighty-five percentile.
Yeah.
They're speeding.
Yeah.
High speed of fifty-four. If that hill isn't a priority, why shouldn't the hills in town, and we have plenty of them, we have them over Cascadia Ridge, we have them. So those are the ones that we do need to after the school zones. I think it's, it's, it, we can't when the chief pulls someone over, he doesn't necessarily look at what he, what people are doing speeding. He's looking at the registration. He's looking at, you know, there's no gas cap, there's no license plate. You can't just take a speed study and that be the only product when you're deciding these things. My opinion only.
No, I, you know, after listening to you too, you're on the same page. Mike was absolutely right. We need a rubrics system. We need everything categorized of importance. That's a fact. What we're having a problem with here is we ran from zero to sixty. We started off with nothing. And we're trying to hurry up and catch up so that we can make it a system that we can work with at this point. So you're both right. He's right in saying that we need this all organized and we need to have priorities. You're all right because we were so far behind in most of these things. Because we didn't realize the city was going to grow at the rate it did, as fast as it did. So that puts us in high motion fast. So now we're trying to catch up. So we're both on the same page. So now we can start branching out and making this more a scheduled item type system like you're talking about where everything is by priority. And steady. We can do that, but we have to catch up to that point. And that's what we've been doing lately. And that's why it seems like we're not on the same page, but we really are. And I think both of you are absolutely correct. I think it's just now coming to a point where we've you know, slowed down a little bit. We're getting the priorities, the last of the priorities in order. And then we're going to start coming together as a council of, of a traffic safety. That's what tonight was all about. It's bringing us all to the same page. So we can sit there and make that list. So we can prioritize in the order that we need to, based upon the needs of the people versus, you know, just going off the cuff and doing well. So you're absolutely right and you're absolutely right. Um, but that's why I wanted us to have this discussion tonight. So we can understand that we're getting there. We are now at that point where we're slowing down, we're getting the priorities in order. You're seeing the speed bumps coming up to date where they are. You've seen the stop signs, you're seeing traffic safety, the lighted signs, you're seeing all the things that we needed that we didn't have at all catching up. So now we're kind of in the same lane. And now we can start branching out and making sure we prioritize based on that. So I, I think that's great. I think that's a perfect thing to say and a perfect thing on your end. Um, we're coming to the end of this meeting. So I count any last statements that need to be made?
I just, I agree with, I agree with Councilman McElroy too. There does need to be order in this. It can't just be splatter paint everywhere because we're trying to appease everyone and we do have, we do have a responsibility to spend people's money wisely. I mean, I completely agree with him. And I, I don't think that anything that he said is saying it's not important. He's just saying have a baseline and stick to that how it is. I mean, bringing up the liberty thing, when I look at that, like I, I understand that liberty is a smaller street and it's in a neighborhood, but you know, when the eighty-five percentile is twenty-three miles an hour and the speed limit is twenty-five. Most people, whether it looks like it or not, they're Most people, whether it looks like it or not, they're doing the speed limit, right? So is that as high a priority as somewhere like Broadway? I wouldn't think it is, right? I, I completely see what he's saying, but how are we going to determine that without a cleaner system? So I, I would like to see maybe that's something that we come up with, uh, again, way longer format conversation, but that whole evaluation system should be a, a brand new structure. I agree with him there, but I, I still think the schools can be addressed ninety days. I don't, I don't, I don't know that that's a realistic. I mean, that's, this is from a thing, but I think if let's put a number to it, schools specifically, and that gives us while they're working on that, we could carry this onto another conversation at a council meeting where we address the rest of the list, but the schools, everybody at this, in this room, quite frankly, has agreed is the starting point.
And I think that was the thing I said bump to the agenda, right? So we'll get that right away. So that is definitely the way to go with this.
I know we're on a time crunch, but I would, I appreciate both Counselor McElroy and Counselor Metcalf's input. Um, to be honest, I've heard the same thing from you at, uh, your council meetings. And I know that you've talked about the rubric system and studies and everything. So I'm going to put your feet to the fire and say, okay, do you have a timeline on when maybe you could get this rubric system done? Because that would help traffic, public and safety then be able to better advise you. You know, since we are liaisons and volunteer liaisons to the community and we can get that information to you as soon as, you know, as possible. And then hopefully, you know, yeah, if we could do ninety days for some kind of, you know, um, problem solving on the school issues, that would be great.
Yeah. We, uh, we spoke to, uh, at our council meeting, I don't know if you watched, but we, uh, Jonathan and I spoke to clear tangible goals, goals that, that, that can be measured. Um, and that's one of the, one of the big reasons that we wanted to come here tonight is we want it, we want to set those goals. Um, we can't make any decisions tonight, but, um, we want to get those goals and we want, we want it to be measurable. Um, you know, and I, I said it last week, you know, we, we've been doing a lot of talking. Now this, and everybody agreed with me. We've been doing a lot of talking. This is the time we need to start. You know, start proving ourselves and, you know, making these decisions and, and as Jonathan's been pushing for a long time, tangible, measurable goals with, with deadlines. You know, that's a, that's a priority to us right now.
Sure.
Okay. I agree with the school zones should be there, but number one priority is the kids, the safety of the kids. I mean, we have safety of the schools on, but they're not always in the school zones. There needs to be safety on sixth. Safety on Eagle Creek highway. You know, wherever there's kids, safety should be the number one priority, whatever we need to do to make these kids safe.
Just quick response. Um, I can come up with an, with my own idea for a scoring rubric and bring it to the next meeting that has it on the agenda and share my proposal. I, I, I'll commit to doing that. That's not a problem. It'd have to be something that everyone agreed on, but I, I definitely bring my proposal for how to score it.
Yeah, that'd be great because I hear you. It seems like almost every meet, you know, when we do have like speed issues or come up, you're like rubric system, which I totally agree with. Because we do, we are, are, we're kind of like, oh, over here, over there, you know, and, and we're trying to get it all done yesterday. You know, and so definitely, you know, we need some kind of consistency right now.
Yeah. And the list, right? Cause like when we say something broad, like we want to take care of the schools and we tell staff,
Right.
we want to take care of the schools, but we don't have a punch list of here's the, what we're going to do in the schools, one, two, three, four, five. Get them done in this order. These are the priorities and then start knocking them out. I'm, I'm all on board and I agree that we want to have safe streets for the kids. I'm not, I, I didn't want to come off as catalyst or something. I'm all in for it. I just want it to be organized and money well spent in the right places with the most bang for the buck. If we have nine hundred trips going down one street and fifty going down another and they have comparable speed studies that are outrageous, let's do the nine hundred trips a day first, and then the fifty one set, you know, I mean, stuff like that.
Right. And when it comes to speed studies too, we had one right here. It's like, okay, only eighty five percent was like, I can't remember. It was like twenty. They were going mile, whatever. Okay. We had like seven hundred and seventy nine vehicles. Now only eighty five percent were in the twenty five mile per hour range, but okay, that's seven hundred and seventy nine vehicles. So how many were speeding? You know what I mean? So there's a different rubric, I would think versus okay, this other one, only a hundred and forty five vehicles and they were all, you know, not speeding within the, so it's like, you know, it's kind of, the rubric is going to get complicated, I think.
Yeah.
Man. So I'm just going to be frank because I'm finally feeling comfortable. But I love what you're saying. I love what you're saying. I love what everybody's saying, but the one thing that we have, it's common denominator here is people that show up and give us the data there. If we measure this data right here, the data of the people that come through, the people being the parents mostly for their children and residents too that live in the area. I'm not just guarding you, but it's just, it's one of those things where I like the idea of the rubrics to you because if you've got all of these three parts, you've got the data from this from you and your team, which is amazing because you're guys, you're the boots on the ground. And I would really love to see us put the fire, sorry, under the arse because I remember growing up. We knew what not to do. We knew we're not to speed. We knew that we were going to get in trouble for it. And that was just one of those things. And I feel like we've lost that precedence and that needs to come back. There needs to be enforcement, not anything against you. I'm just speaking frankly in general because of the people behind the wheel doing what they're doing, not you. That's what needs to happen. And if we're able to measure all these goals together and figure out, follow the children, right? Where are they at? They're at school. They're on their way to and from, like, let's go there and start from the heart. Because that is our heart. And go from there. Light it up. I don't care how many lights you have to put out there. Just do it. That, that's.
We, we bring that to you and you vote on that.
Absolutely. No, 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 no. I'm with you. I'm, I'm hearing everything that's going on, but it's just, it's one of those things where I concur because you have to have some kind of measurable goal. Right? With budget and with the heart of what we're really doing. Money is one thing, yes, but the heart outweighs everything. And if we take care of the kids and we prevent that from happening at all, I don't care how much money we have to spend. That's just how I am.
Good job. Matthew.
I think it'd be awesome if, uh, McElroy started a rubric. I think we got to this point today because there was no standard in the past. And if we can start one now with the way S D K is growing, we can maintain that, right? I mean, it doesn't have to be perfect right out the gates, but if you were willing to put together something that we could go over and start adding to and, you know, that would be, I think that would help now and down the road. So.
Think of a better numbers guy than Mike here.
Yeah.
I'm glad he said it.
John? I'll get John and then I'll get Kerry.
Yeah, sure. You know, we've heard testimony tonight that the things that we've been doing are working. Um, I specifically remember the, the bus driver. Um, so the things that we're doing are working. And I think that this body's learned a lot. I think another step of, of in congruence with, uh, Counselor McElroy is starting to codify uh, the things that we've learned. You know, I've read a few uh, subdivision or whatever you call them things and, and there's some traffic stuff in it, but we've learned a lot. We know where the trouble spots are. And so we can start planning ahead for all those new neighborhoods coming. We'll have a good idea of where the trouble spots are going to be and we'll have a good idea of what sorts of things we can put in place as the homes are being built or whatever it looks like. So, um, so let's not forget that we've, you know, we're behind, but we've done a lot of good work and we've learned a lot. And we're definitely a mo, a motivated bunch. So, uh, I think it, it looks good moving forward.
Okay. Okay, Kerry and then Matt.
Michael, you can, you can compute this thing. I know. Even if you use a slide rule.
That's right.
There's, there's just one ingredient that is not always consistent. And it's people. There has to be an understanding that there is the sporadic moment of people in this formula. And maybe somebody in six houses in a row don't come home at a certain time when a speed study is done. And the sixth, the seventh person is home all day and they go outside and cars are screaming down the road. An average, an average statement of speeding between one on these studies and, uh, Jim has the facts on them is like, sometimes there's a fifty nine mile an hour speeder. But then sometimes there's a seventeen mile an hour. So we have radical moments in time and what's that caused by? It's caused by whoever's driving the vehicle. Real quick here. Front loader driving through Campanella. How fast? Oh, we, um, and we were out driving around with my wife and we got up to, uh, Curran Creek on the Cascadier Ridge side. And he came down from Curran Creek phase three. I mean, around the corner, like we thought it was a vehicle. And then we look up and it's like big John Deere, yellow. Went past us, turned around, my wife's FJ went after the vehicle. Go on the speed limit. I got to the top of the hill to drop down to Faraday. It was gone. So continue got down Curran Creek into Faraday, get down the bottom of the hill, Sweetwater, take a right. There he is going through, going over all those humps with that big front loader. And went out to Deuce, or he went up to the next street, went out to Deuce because they were putting down some of the speed humps, followed them all the way down, took a left and then went into right over here, um, at, uh, Race Crossing where they tore that old house down. And of course I'm, I'm Irish, so I just kept going. I don't, you know, my, my wife is as mad as I was and I talked about it with several people and I don't know what to do other than, you know, file a complaint or I, I know I, I have the, you know, I took pictures while I was driving. I shouldn't have because that's not safe. But my emotions overtook me. Calm down. Couple of days later, it was the weekend, so I went to where it was and it was sitting there. I have pictures of it. It was Southwest Underground. I know exactly which one it was, and I don't know what to do. I don't know whether to, you know, file a complaint, who I have to talk to, because that is completely unacceptable. And those two areas are where all the mothers came in and spoke to you guys at the last meeting about cars. And now we have a vehicle that's how many tons just flying through the neighborhood for no reason. There, the, that was an incident. That's not a pattern. That's an incident. So when you have an incident, it's, you know, like, that's, that's what it was. It wasn't like every day at three o'clock, here comes the front loader. So the point is in the, in figuring out statistics, the people have to be in the middle of this thing with kids, elderly, either one, or just husband and wife, whatever. So the consideration of statistics is great and, and we need that. It's got to happen. But then the wild card is the people. And that has to be, that's an unknown in, in the realm of speeding. We run through the neighborhoods, Jim and I, twelve to seventeen to eighteen miles an hour. When there's two cars on each side of the road in all of our field trips and there's hoops out there in the street and the, the, the speed limit's twenty five. If you rent through there at twenty five, that's too fast. If you went there at twenty on the weekend, that's too fast. So everybody has to use their own judgment and driving in these, in these subdivisions. And the people we've talked to, uh, they make statements that are absolute, man. Right before the stop sign in Campanella, before it hits Eagle Creek, three houses in, the elderly guy just says, man, it's a raceway until I hit the brakes. But th- this is the issue of if Michael said this, he goes, if one person complains, we can't change everything. No, that's true. We can't. But when a neighborhood says, man, I, we're, they're rolling too fast through here. That, that's the key that comes against statistics and, and formula. And so which one gets which? Well, traffic speed studies said, nah, not this time around. People say, hey, slow them down. That, this, this is the issue. So we need both. We need computations, but we also can't shove the voice away. And that's, I think that's the crust of this balance right now is what's going on.
It is, and it kind of goes back to what I was saying with, you know, we're kind of at that catch up moment and we've caught up and now we need to slow down, take a moment, figure this out, plan it out, go forward with a organized, sensible plan such as you brought up. So, you know, I think Kerry, you're absolutely right. They, you know, people in the room, that's the whole point of this too, is having you all in the room to give us your personal experiences because I hold that very valuable. You can't, studies, I've been in this room, listening to studies for, I mean, years now. A lot, too long. Um, and, and studies, you know, I'm all about studies. I really am. But a lot of time it's for other people to make money and it's not for the realism of what's happening. And that's a shame, but that's truth. But we want to change that. S D K is a place where we believe we can fix this problem. I think we can. And I think we're doing it right here. This is the beginning of it. Oh, Matt, sorry, Matt. Matt first, then just.
Um, I, I think the state, at least as a guideline in their process, uh, when, when you can apply to change speeds and so on, is fifty percentile. Uh, and I, and I know they also, uh, as Melanie was mentioning about, uh, arterials and collectors, um, they also refer to like Kerry's kind of talk about the context of a road. Um, and divide them, for instance, uh, urban core, uh, urban mix and so on, suburban, uh, commercial residential combination, uh, that maybe that's a helpful guideline, um, as far as a, a base and where to go from there. That's, that's all.
Jonathan? I, it's just a two second thing. I just, I would like to not forget the conversation piece of the bringing on the next FTE and, and bringing the chief into that conversation on seeing what a realistic timeline for that is or if we're there or, or what the deal is. I know we're a little ahead of schedule, but I think let's not push that off either.
No, I don't think so. I think that will be something we've been looking at really quick here.
So just to, you know, piggyback off of what Kerry was saying, you know, I know I've said it before in our council meeting, but, uh, you know, reality isn't everybody's reality. Perception, people's individual perception is their reality and we have to, we do have to take that into consideration. Everybody's got their own perception, you know, um, you got seven people, seven people living on, living on a street and their perception is people are driving too fast. That's their reality. You know, that's, that's not, you know, that, that's not a speed study. That's them living on that street, watching the traffic, you know? So that's something we do need to take into, into consideration. I'm all about statistics. You know, I'm a numbers guy myself, but, um, uh, we do need to take into consideration, you know, people's perception, which is their, like I said, their reality. So we need to figure out how to make that all work together.
All right. I think we're about finished up here. Uh, we did a great job tonight. I think we accomplished a lot of things. I think we heard each other, which is very important. And I think, uh, all of you are doing a great job. The city is doing a great job keeping up with us, which can be very difficult at times. Um, but we thank everybody who showed up tonight and the ones that stayed and are still here. Thank you. Thank you for being here because that makes all the difference in the world. We wouldn't do anything if it wasn't for you. So this is really what this is for. We want clarity. We want concern. We want to know that we're doing the right thing. So I think we've come to that and I appreciate all of you tonight. Traffic safety, you're doing a great job. And I hope we can do this again rather than further out sooner. So thank you. And this adjourned.